Council work meeting.
Nope, gotta wait.
Wait a minute, I'll wait for my queue. Are we good? Okay, welcome everyone to the work meeting. This is where we hear and discuss, but we do not vote on anything. And today is Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. We're located at the address of the county building at 47 South Main Street in Twillup. We're on the third floor and we're in suite 306. The time current, time is 5:35 PM. As far as roll call, we representing the county attorney's office. There's our county attorney, Scott Broadhead, welcome. Our county councilman, Councilman Tripp, Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Hamner, and Councilman Wardle present. From our county manager's office, we have Andy Welch, along with Assistant County Manager Brittany Lopez, welcome. From our clerk's office is our county clerk, Tracy Shaw, welcome. Thank you for keeping the recording. And we have various auxiliaries out in the audience, welcome every one of you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, may I be heard?
Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle.
I'd like to amend the agenda tonight and table item 5A until December 6th.
Hearing a motion to amend the agenda, specifically item 5A until December 6th, is there a second? Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas, any further discussions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of amending the work meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay.
That was 5A we just took out?
5A.
This is amending the budget? Amending the agenda.
Amending the agenda.
Alright, okay.
The votes are already over anyway.
I know. Wait a second, why?
I'm just teasing. Thank you. Then that will bring us down to line item transfer, excuse me, Unified Fleet Services. Skipping here. Are they present? Councilman Hoffman, oh, thank you. Please come up to the mic. Will you make sure that those lights are green that you're speaking in?
Yep. Thanks. Mike Scott with Unified Fleet Services.
Welcome, Mike.
And then I'm Bodie Taylor.
Is there one more of those?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I know I'm out at the end of the year.
Yeah, we're Unified Fleet Services, so Mike Scott.
Bodie Taylor.
We have a presentation to go through. We can do that, or if you guys have questions that you want to hit first, we can do that, whatever would be best for the council.
What's the length of your presentation?
It can be as long as you would like, but definitely less than 15 minutes. If we're going beyond that, then you guys are really excited about vehicles.
Why don't we just start on your council, I look for your council, but I suggest we start on their presentation and as we have questions, we can answer then. Go ahead, Mike.
So, yeah, we're Unified Fleet Services. What and I have the wrong proposal pulled up here.
As long as it's half price, maybe.
16 minutes now.
Yeah, 16 minutes now. Well, I didn't think you wanted to have the pitch that the bank hears all the time. Alright, so Unified Fleet Services, we do municipal leasing. We only focus in the municipal space. We do private passenger type vehicles, so we're not going to be doing yellow iron or any of your heavy equipment. It's going to be pickup trucks, SUVs, that sort of thing. So that's what we focus on. Main thing that we focus on trying to do is try and make your cost of your fleet as inexpensive as possible, from an entire perspective of what goes into it. So fuel costs, safety costs, maintenance costs, plus just the cost of having the vehicle out there. So we look at trying to optimize it and keep you in the best possible vehicles that you can at the best possible price. The results that we've had for other clients, fuel efficiency, depending on what your individual departments are facing. Usually we're able to reduce the cost of fuel by about seven, seven and a half cents per mile. Depends on the age of your fleet and all of that, but it's about a 28% usual savings. If you have a lot of vehicles that are idling a lot, such as patrol vehicles, we see that number go up to about 35%. Tires, all of our vehicles on the one-year lease program are brand new, so you never buy tires again, so it's 100% reduction in the cost of tires for those vehicles that fit a one-year lease program. Usually about five and a half cents per mile. Maintenance, also because they're brand new vehicles, it's a couple oil changes at best that you're paying for. There's no cost of transmissions, any warranty items, there's no surprises to budgets, it's always covered. And then depreciation, because of how the lease functions, you do not incur any depreciation expense on your side when those vehicles are turned through at the end of the year. So it's a way to try and keep all of the, the cost of your vehicles known upfront every year. So we focus in three key areas. We do vehicle leasing, that's a primary source of all of our revenue, where we finance the vehicles and it's just a one flat fee per vehicle. We do fleet management for municipalities that want to continue to own their own vehicles, but we do the purchasing and liquidation of the vehicles. And then we also do upfit on a turnkey basis, so anything that has light sirens, prisoner transport, all of our vehicles are pre-upfit before they go to you. And your team shows up, it's usually about a one-hour turnaround, you roll away in the brand-new car, we take the old one back, strip the equipment out, doesn't have to be your hassle. So anyone that deals with a lot of upfit, they know that can be a major pain when you have vehicles sitting down. So from the fleet leasing perspective, the main thing we try and do is keep it capital efficient, keep your budgets as low as possible, minimize the downtime by always having the new vehicles available. We try and keep as much selection as possible, so Ford, GM, anyone that you want to work with, we try and make sure you've got all of that and the type of vehicles you want. And for us, our interest is selling your vehicles at the end of the year. So banking, they usually want to make as much as they can on interest rates, of course, that's what drives their revenues. Dealerships just want to sell the vehicle upfront, that's where they make their money. We only make money if we keep your costs down and we're able to make money on that vehicle at the end of the year. So our interests are aligned from that perspective, so. Types of vehicles we lease, this is a sampling, there's definitely others. F-150 crew cabs, they'll always be the current model year, so 2022, 2023. Lariat trim package always has a crew cab, leather heated seats, that sort of thing. Occasionally it has sunroof, definitely will have tint. We love diesel trucks, that's by far the best, most economically efficient from our model. Same thing, it's going to be LTZ trim package, so leather heated seats, all of those same basic things. Suburbans and then Explorers. Explorers, we drop down a little bit, we go to the XLT package, usually for law enforcement. Those could potentially go on to a potential three-year. All the vehicles have the standard current safety features, so the automatic braking, lane keep assist, so pedestrian walks in front of the car, it'll brake ahead of time. Somebody stops short, it's going to prevent that accident. So sample lease rates, depending on what the vehicle is, for a flat lease for the year, $6,500, that's the all-in cost for a half-ton pickup truck. $6,000 for a diesel, and then across the board on the pricing, so. The leasing contracts, annual payment, we don't have any mileage restrictions on there, so we're not going to say, look, you went 15,000 miles, we only agreed to 13, so I want 2,000 miles paid for. We don't do any of that. We set upfront, here's what it needs to be when the vehicle comes back. As long as it's in good condition and it's not beat up, then we're good. Of all of our clients, less than 1% do we ever have to do any charge backs because they beat up the vehicles. Happy to show you pictures of those. Caked in mud inside and out, missing rear, rearview mirrors, shattered windshields, missing door panels. It takes a lot for us to have to charge you back, so it always works pretty well. We do charge for basic damage, so if it has a shattered windshield or something, we'll be charging you that $500, but that's it, so. Key piece, we do have to have an affidavit of authority for whoever is going to sign on the lease. We got to make sure if you're signing for it, obviously you have the authority to do it, because we want to get paid, so. So that's everything on the leasing side. On the upfit, we do bundled upfit, so it already comes in with all the equipment that you would need, light sirens, whatever packages make sense. Always under warranty, brand-new equipment. Can do decals as well for your fleet if you need that, if you do it yourself, that's great. One of the biggest components of why people opt for our upfit and turnkey program is as model years change and you're taking equipment from one unit to another, that can pose an additional cost for you guys where you have to buy new equipment now. That's our risk, because this is all our equipment that we rent out to you for the time that you're in that vehicle. So if there's a model change and we have to get new equipment, that's our loss that we sustain, it's not yours. So it's just the flat annual cost of renting basically the upfit equipment. The one-hour turnaround is the biggest piece, though. When you just show up, take out your computers, whatever equipment you have, and hop into the new one.
And there's typically two packages to that upfit program. There's an admin package as well as a full patrol package, which I guess you were getting to that.
Yep. We like the admin package best. It works well for all of us. We can usually have those, once we have a signed agreement with whoever wants that, we can have those turned out as long as the vehicle's available. Usually within one week, we can have it all set, ready to go for any undercover admin use. Patrol takes a lot longer because you have a prisoner transport cage, all of that, but usually within a month's lead time, we can have the parts in and have it prepped for you, ready to go. And that's the annual cost on the, on the upfit, so $6,000 for a full patrol unit. Cost of equipment alone is about $10,000, so labor's usually about three grand, depending on who your upfitter is, and then undercover's three grand, so.
It says three grand, $35,000. Why is there a big disparity there?
Well, I was just hoping you wouldn't catch it, is why. We really want to get you on that last one, yeah. No, the pricing should be $3,500, not $35,000. $3,500, that difference is, like everyone, we're seeing inflation on the parts, so if that's going to go up, we'll let you know when that order goes in, if it goes up that high. Most of them got up about $100. And then fleet management is basically everything we've just talked about. If you want to do it with your own capital, but we become your procurement agent, we're happy to do that as well. And we do liquidation, procurement, all of that, so. Couple other.
Can you back up on that? Give a two-minute discussion about what you just said.
Yeah.
Procuring and everything else.
So as you may be experiencing right now, the manufacturers are opening their order portals and they last for about 24 hours sometimes. So what we do, we work with your team, get in all the purchase orders with us, but then we're able to react immediately and get it in with all the dealerships and all the manufacturers to get those orders in. We order on your behalf. We charge a fee for that management, but if you're going to own the vehicles outright, then obviously we're not incurring any of that interest expense, which is also going up right now, and those become just your vehicles. Ideally, we like to keep them in that one-year cycle. It's the most, from our perspective, the most capital efficient, because we're able to get the incentives from the manufacturer and minimize that depreciation expense. So we like to just continue to keep cycling the vehicles, but you own it, it's titled to you, it's on the county's money, we just become your agent to get it done. The biggest reason why it works so well is, once we have that purchase order, which is non-binding, if anything changes, the manufacturer changes prices you want out, it's no big deal. But once we have that purchase order, we can do the job and get all the orders in, and then when it comes, you can decide at that point, have your council meetings or whatever, do we actually want to buy this vehicle? And so it gives you plenty of lead time to make those decisions, so.
Thank you.
That answered the question.
Thank you.
And then on that, we will do the turnkey as well, it's just a simple rental agreement for that equipment.
How much is the rental agreement for the equipment on here?
Same thing, whether it's a leased vehicle or the, you buy the vehicle and you're keeping the upfit equipment for one year, the price stays the same, so.
Like, what is the amount for the equipment? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, so if it was an undercover package, three grand a year for light sirens, everything in there.
And that includes, that includes all the equipment, that is the cost.
It kind of depends, because it can vary depending on what agency or, every agency's a little different, so they might have a couple different items that they want to add, but it should be pretty close.
So the siren, the controller, a lot of the lights, if it's undercover, obviously there's not going to be anything really visible. It includes all that equipment, yes.
For that $6,000 a year, roughly, or $3,000 a year?
Yeah, so to buy the equipment new, you're looking at about 10 grand, so. And then if you rent it from us annually, it's about six grand, so, and that includes the labor, so.
And then we use premier lighting in Salt Lake. I don't know who you're currently using for your outfit, but.
It's all under warranty, so any issues, we will only do it if it's under warranty, so you're not getting old equipment, because I don't want to be getting calls, I want to make sure they're taking care of any issues that come up. Couple other options, we do an express replacement program, a lot of our clients have started taking this, where we'll have additional vehicles that are registered to the county, they're your vehicles, you don't pay anything for them. We primarily do this with diesel vehicles. They sit in our lot, and if you need them, you then put them on a lease and they're yours. They cannot be used by anyone else, they're registered to the county, it's already been, all the paperwork's done. That vehicle sits in case something happens, and the in case being, a vehicle gets totaled or you're growing, you need a new one, and a transmission blows on something that you've already got, you can take that at that time. So we really like to do that. The reason we obviously do it is, at the end of the year, if you don't end up using it, we still turn around and sell that vehicle and hopefully get a profit off of that, so.
So from a single-year wage to a three-year wage, what's the advantage, disadvantages?
Well, it depends on, on, the three-year usually is a fit for more of your patrol vehicles for law enforcement. That would be the reason you would want to do that. That's really the only reason. The cost to be in a three-year is more expensive than being in a one-year. So a one-year diesel truck will always be the most inexpensive way of staying in a vehicle. But for law enforcement, a lot of times they, they want to just keep a Ford Explorer running for three years, and it's the best way just to keep it, keep it going, so.
So what's the cost per year on a three?
So it depends on the vehicle that's selected. So there's a lot of factors. On the one-year, it's much easier on our side, because we know what the incentives are from the manufacturer, and they basically cover that first year's depreciation. When we're going into year two and year three, depending on what you select, we're going to have to figure out how much principal payment we have to make towards that vehicle, so it, it varies unfortunately. So, but we can give you some sample pricing, though. Last year, a three-year Explorer with a patrol package built into it, roughly be about $9,000, $10,000 a year, so.
So $9,000 to $10,000, that's 35,000 for the three years?
Yeah.
You got to turn that on, but you got about two more minutes.
Okay. Well, that one doesn't have the references on it, but if you've got a printed copy, you'll see that Montrose County, a bunch of counties that we work with. If you need people to call out to, feel free to do it, so. And then our executive team, me, Eric Stats is my partner. Founded Flex Fleet Rentals and Barco Rent a Truck, if you're familiar with those. We've been in this business for a long, long time, so we love, we love pickup trucks, so.
I think I had a Barco truck in 1985?
I'm so sorry.
It's been around that long?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have no relation to it, great company, though, so.
Now, can the contracts just be for one or two vehicles, or is it like, you have to go county-wide? How do your, is it department, or how do you, how do your contracts work?
Yeah, our, our contracts are, they could be just with your department. Our, some of our best clients have two diesel trucks that we, we provide, and they are fantastic, and we have a great relationship there. So we are, we are happy to do it at, you know, just one vehicle to the, to the department, that works just fine. So long as there's an affidavit of authority that makes sure we can do that, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. That'll bring us down to the, excuse me, line item transfer, parks and recreation, utilities and salaries, human services, Medicaid, matches. I don't have anybody down here who's speaking to that. Oh, yes, please.
I guess I should have paid more attention when Allison did this. The first one we have is parks and rec, the budget for employees, let me see. There were two positions in July that were moved from facilities to parks and rec, but the budget didn't get moved with them, so here we are toward the end of the year, needing more money in parks and rec budget to cover those. So this is just moving money from the facility's salary and wages to parks and rec salary and wages.
Following the employees?
Yes.
Counsel, any questions?
So that's $54,000 on the dollar rate?
Yeah, $54,526.
I got my questions answered early.
So you didn't, you asked it privately? Okay. Yes, absolutely. So with the other two, you want to address those, the $15,000 and the $50,000, please?
Certainly. The $15,000 is for, again, parks and rec in, specifically for Deseret Peak, and it is moving from their material supplies and services to their utilities to cover the increased cost they had this year. Any questions on that one?
Oh, yeah, we're, utilities have gone up, haven't they? Any question, counsel?
Okay. And then the very last one is from our human services department, and this is one Gary spoke about in the last meeting or two, where he was concerned about his third-quarter payment. His third-quarter payment is actually January through March, so it won't affect this year, but the reason we want to move forward with this is because the state reconciles how much we pay them upfront. We pay them upfront and then they reconcile at the end of the quarter, and sometimes we owe them more money and sometimes we owe them less. But by the time we get that invoice, it will be next year and we won't be able to do this adjustment.
Okay. Paying ahead so that we covered that. Any comments, counsel? Okay, so I would look for a recommendation to move it forward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have tabled 5A, so that will bring us down to 5B, requesting for recertification to the Twillup County Justice Court. And Scott, Mr. Scott Broadhead.
Okay, so every four years, the justice court needs to be recertified, and we have to announce the date. And by the way, the resolution that hopefully we pass today, I'll remind, oh, I already told Tracy, it needs to be signed today, by the way, because we have to send it in tomorrow. So don't, so don't run off, don't run off.
Don't run off, okay.
Don't run off, Jared, okay. So in the process of recertifying, the court, the justice court judge, Judge Dow, has to complete an affidavit about how the court operates. A copy of a written opinion, which is, I think, part of your packet, has to be provided by myself. There are 18 statutory requirements, as well as 10 requirements from the judicial council. Our court has met all those requirements. A third item that has to be done is a copy of a court security plan has to be sent, which we have completed. So the final step in this process is the council has to pass a resolution that requests recertification of the court and affirms that the entity will continue to meet all those requirements. So that is what's on our agenda today, so we've asked that let's get moved on to the business meeting and address.
Just one question, Scott. Do they look at the building and say, hey, that's sufficient for the amount of hearings you're having and people, that kind of stuff?
Yes, they handle that as, that's part of the, part of the process, that's part of Judge Dow's affidavit process. You know, it has all the things. Make sure you have a gavel, make sure you have a robe, make sure you have a, make sure you have proper security, make sure you have all these, the outer, I guess, visual, I guess, requirements so that the court can handle the caseload it has, so.
And this is every four years?
Every four years.
So Dow has to stay on for another four years?
Well, he was just elected, so yes. Or retained, I said, the proper.
I'm going to recommend we move it forward, but I'm just curious, what would happen if a council or commission doesn't recertify, what happens then?
Then the administrative officer of the court can move forward with closing our court. And if they close our court, we have no court, because they're not giving in anyone's.
True, so it's a good thing or a bad thing?
It's a good thing, because that would then transfer everything to district courts. That would probably cause real problems with Twillup City, since they sent our cases here. You would really make a lot of enemies, Ty. Consequences is that the court, consequences is the court would close, and then all cases would then automatically get transferred to the district court, which would then.
Which is in Salt Lake.
Well, it'd go to our district court.
Oh, district court here.
Which would further overload our already very busy district court.
This is essentially, that's essentially what Stockton did a few months ago, they just didn't.
When they stopped it, those cases automatically transferred to our countywide justice court.
Okay.
By statute.
Any questions, counsel, comments? Thank you, Scott, and it sounds like we move it forward on the business meeting. Thank you. That'll bring us down to 5C, authorizing Twillup County Councilmember Tom Tripp to receive compensation and benefits from the Utah Local Government Trust. Colin.
This is Resolution 2022-44. As I understand it, Mr. Tripp serves as a member of the Board of the Utah Local Government's Trust. He attends meetings and they give him a per diem rate for that. I think it's $300 a meeting, but I could be wrong.
It's dependent on the meeting, but it includes the government mileage rate to drive your personal vehicle, and it's a rate that's either 150 or 300, depending on the length of the intended meeting.
Okay. They require, they, the Government's Trust requires that each, that each county government or city government that has a representative on the board pass this resolution occasionally saying, we've looked at this, we authorized Mr. Tripp to receive the money. That's what it's for. I don't know his plans for when he is no longer serving on the council. I had a brief discussion with the trust and I think they intend to ask him to stay on, but I haven't heard the final outcome of that.
Their bylaws allow you to stay on a year after year, I'm.
And I think they're going to ask you to do that if they've not yet already done it.
They haven't, but presumably will.
So probably more questions on that later, is do we have to have a representative from the county?
No, you don't get to have one. They go out and seek who they will.
Okay.
You've got five representatives from cities, five representatives from counties, and they have one other one from, oh. They have a couple of special service districts that have to make it an uneven number.
So where does the funding come from? Not the, they want to repay the, the check.
I'm certain it comes from the money that every member entity pays to the trust every year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Is it okay to move it forward, counsel? Okay, thank you, Colin. And Colin, you're on D, authorizing the county manager to sign documents related to the settlement of the opioid litigation.
You will recall that from time to time, we receive settlement offers in the various opioid litigation lawsuits. You have from time to time authorized Mr. Welch to sign those settlement agreements. They continue to trickle in, and so this is a resolution that says, rather than authorize Andy to sign each one as it comes, you're giving him the blanket authorization to sign them all, then he will put them on his contracts under ratification so that you know what the settlements are. We're just trying to save repeated resolutions on the number. We'll, we'll get two or three or four of them every year.
We'll still have visibility to them, it's just giving him the authorization. I'm sorry, Scott, did I cut you off?
I was going to say that the, the big ones have already been settled, but we're getting a lot of smaller ones from maybe individual doctors or smaller pharmacies, and they're much smaller amounts than the big one we are all aware of, so that just seems to make a lot more sense than sort of bringing those smaller ones to you every single time, just to have Andy do it.
In fact, there's one on your contracts tonight that, that I'll, if you approve this, we'll be asking Mr. Welch to sign tonight so that we can send it back tomorrow.
And that was my only concern, counsel, is if we still have visibility to them, and we certainly will, and continue.
You will.
But it gives him authorization, so we don't have to keep coming in, having votes to sign it later. Any other, any other questions, counsel?
No.
No. Move it forward, okay? Move it forward? Okay. Thank you. That'll bring us down to E, adopting the policy governing, application and review process.
You actually adopted the PID policy on November first, but I did not anticipate that you would do it that night, and so I did not have a cover resolution for you. This resolution simply makes a record of the fact that you adopted it. It says, we're adopting this policy. We're adopting it effective November first, which you've already done.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I, I've just had a...
Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments about formatting the application. I've been doing government applications on behalf of a private entity through my career, and generally they say something that you should title each of those required headings and present them in order in the form. So it makes the review easy to tell if you have all of the pieces rather than having to add front and back. Would you accept friendly formatting, not changing the provisions to dictate that they will submit their application in a way that's easy to review?
I'm fine with that.
I, I don't see a problem with that.
That way, when, uh, community development or whoever's doing the review, they can easily ascertain whether they have all the pieces.
It'd probably be easier on a searchable opportunity. Counsel, any comments on that? You're okay with that? Okay? Then with that, moving forward with those changes, is it, do you want to have it in this business meeting? Do you want to move it to?
The plan is to do it tonight, in the business meeting.
Counsel?
Yeah, one other kind of question. It says we're going to have fees. We got to have those established before we take any applications, I assume. And I'd like to know kind of the basis of how we decide what that fee is.
The resolution on the fee, on changes to the fee schedule is also before you tonight, both in your work meeting and your business meeting.
So that one's on there?
The proposal is two thousand dollars for the initial, um...
Preliminary.
Preliminary, and then five thousand for the application itself.
That, that's the way I reckon, thought. Does that satisfy some of your questions? Okay, moving forward. Business. Thank you. That will bring us to, um, Colin, I hope you're comfortable there.
Love it.
To F, establishing salaries of the Tula County officers for twenty-twenty-three fiscal year.
This is Resolution two-zero-two-two-dash-five-zero. Every year you are required to establish the salaries for elected officials. This one is on for discussion only in the work meeting. It is not scheduled for the business meeting until December sixth, when you deal with other budget issues. You'll see the proposed salaries there on the table that's attached as Exhibit A. But let me point out that on that Exhibit A, the third, well, second paragraph from the bottom, it says, "Council members may enroll themselves and their immediate family members in insurance programs offered to full-time county employees, but shall pay the entire premium for such coverage without county contribution." That comes from a provision in our county ordinances, one-dash-two-dash-six, which basically says the same thing. I was approached by Mr. Hamner a couple of days ago and asked to draw a provision in our county ordinances, so I've done that and I've attached that as well. And it reads, "Council members may enroll themselves and their immediate family members in insurance programs offered to full-time county employees at the same levels of contribution as full-time county employees." So currently, the five of you, if you want insurance, you have to pay for it all out of your pocket. If you adopt this proposed change or something like it, the county would kick in a contribution just like they do for all other full-time county employees. And I need to know, based on your discussion, whether you want me to proceed with that and draft up an ordinance that says that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like the idea of that, that amendment, that redraft, because it's important, I think, to make, uh, people who want to run for this position have some incentive to do it, because there takes a lot of hours, way above and beyond just being like, we get paid, we're considered part-time. Uh, we spend a whole, a lot of hours doing it. So I think we need, this is a small contribution that would incentivize people to come out and say, well, now it's worth my time to be involved, because people want to do public service. But I think we also need to reward them, incentivize them for doing. Now, I don't need it, but there will be people in the future who do. And I think it's a good step to, to make that, and just the same benefit that, that we do normalists to our other employees, that same kind of contribution. So I, I like the idea.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Any other comments?
I've got a comment.
Ca- after his. My, mine's not on this issue, but it's on something written, this document.
Thank you, Councilman Tripp.
We can decide whatever we want, but I think we've got a broader situation here. We have full-time employees here in the county, we have part-time home people in the county, we've got half-time people in the county, and we have different levels of benefits without clearly delineate who gets what when. So I think that ought to be somehow addressed in this whole mess, too. Are, is, does every part-time employee get benefits? Do some of them get them? Can you help me out, Andy?
Depends on the benefits, and Adam can, can bail me out, but if you're three-quarters time, you're, you're entitled to health benefits. If you're at least half-time, you get, um, annual and sick leave and PTO.
Retirement.
And retirement.
Yes.
And then anything below that, you, you don't qualify any, for any benefits.
Less than twenty hours, we call part-time, there, there's no benefits, uh, at all. If you're half-time, you, you are eligible for some PTO or leave accrual, uh, but no insurance benefits, uh, and retirement. And then three-quarter time is basically treated as a full-time employee, but they get a reduced amount of leave. So it is defined, uh, as far as, uh, those levels and, and what they receive, so.
And by statute, you get retirement benefits by, because you're elected council members, that's, that's non-negotiable. You get those.
That was not imposed by us.
No, that's imposed by the legislature.
You know, and, and just for the record, and I'm not fighting this, guys, but the study committee suggested you'd be spending six and twelve hours a week. How you guys doing with that?
You're not going to fight it? It sounds like it. Has you get punched in the nose? Well, um, and, and let me just speak that it wasn't just pulled out of the sky. There's been some research done with different municipalities, cities, um, school districts, um, and welcome to Tula County where we didn't have that, but, uh, other ones had it, and so to...
But it is mixed.
It's what, say again?
It's a mixed bag. Some do, some don't.
Well, you'd be hard to find for those that don't, but, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman... You're not going to fight it, right, Tripp?
I'm just correcting. It's a mixed bag. We could choose or not.
You're not going to fight it, right, Tripp? Yes or no?
Mr. Chairman's discussing it.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle.
I think before we move this on to next week, uh, in paragraph one, I know what the study committee said about the salaries, that the range would be from twenty to twenty-four thousand dollars. And we said it, no greater than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, but that is in conflict with another part of this paragraph, and it has now become in conflict that said that the council shall receive the same, uh, living and merit salary adjustments as regular employees, which this council will go over that twenty-five thousand dollars on this budget.
You will, if you give yourself the same raise you're giving, supposedly giving to everyone else.
So my recommendation is that we put a period after the word year, twenty thousand dollars per year, and strike and not greater than twenty-five thousand dollars per year. The fact is, this job isn't a twenty, or a six-hour, or an eight-hour-a-week job. At a minimum, it's twenty. And, and I say that at a minimum. And to not, for the same reasoning on benefits, to allow for cost of living adjustments diminishes the role, diminishes the office, and will diminish people from running if we sell it at twenty-five thousand.
And may diminish the effort of those in the offices.
I would agree. I would agree. So I, it's my recommendation that we put a period after twenty thousand dollars per year. That was the study group's seat, uh, minimum, but based upon paragraph five or one, paragraph one after the word except, that now has come into conflict with the other, so.
So counsel, we've had some discussion.
I'd like to add one point that also, if we do give a benefit for insurance, whatever the cost of that could be interpreted as, as being above that salary line as well, so I think you need to fix...
I think we have to fix that line, or we're, we're in conflict with our own ordinance.
Correct. That's what I, that's what I'm trying to say. You have to throw that in, because that is compensation and...
Yep.
So.
I agree. We go, moving forward?
Forward.
But you said it's only for...
So what I'll bring back to you on the six is a resolution on the salaries for the elected officials with that table attached, and another ordinance to amend section one-dash-two-dash-six, as you've discussed it tonight.
Will we be able to meet the noticing requirements on the ordinance? Okay, yep.
You do have to have a public hearing on the salary resolution.
Yeah, but that's already been, that's already been noticed.
Okay.
I'm looking at the ordinance change. Okay.
Wait, you'll be able to get that?
I guess, yep, we'll be fine.
Thank you.
A question on that, just point of order. Do we, if we're giving ourselves additional compensation to elected officials, does that have to be there as well on that kind of time?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
We have a obligation to post salaries for the elected officials. If we change their compensation, otherwise we do or do not have to follow that same guidance. For example, if I spend another, uh, ten thousand dollars a year on elected insurance, does that need to fall into that same thing, or we just do that by ordinance and be fine?
I don't know the answer to that, but to say, to be safe, we might want to treat them all the same and have a public hearing on both so that there is no question. Okay.
Okay. Um, so we won't be voting on that, but we'll have that on, excuse me, we will be voting on that in December sixth. Yeah. That brings us down to G, amending the Tula County fee schedule. Uh, Andy?
I'll take that. As you recall, last year, we amended, um, our, the state code, actually. Colin went to the legislature and had the state code amended to allow us to put our fees, rather than having it in our county code, to have it as part of a resolution, and so we adopted a resolution with the fee schedule, and so the promise was, was each year we wanted to review those fees, and so this is a, I sent this out early in November, and then gave, um, I think departments about three weeks to respond back with changes. Some of the fees, of course, are set by the state, and we can't change those fees, but we'll keep those the same. But those that we do have, um, prerogative to change, we asked the departments to look at those, and so, um, some of them that we added in, in community development, we had impact fees, and Colin, you have to bail me out on this one. So the impact fees were not in the county code. It's in a separate...
It was in an ordinance that was passed several years ago, but the fees were never included in the fee schedule, nor was that ordinance included in the county code anywhere. It's just floating out there.
Outside of everything. And so we pulled those fees into the fee schedule. We also added, as we talked earlier about the, the PID, we added in the fees for that. We had some additional fees, um, or some adjustments in fees in the roads department and, and Parks and Recreation in Solidway. Some of these are just to keep up with inflation. Some of them are for services that we provide that we weren't charging for, or some are services that we, or a fee that we needed to charge something for. A prime example was on roads. We had, we didn't have a, a road closure fee, and we had a situation where a developer kept the road closed for longer than they should have, and there was no fee for them for each day, and so we're adding in some fees just to keep people honest and making sure they're getting projects done in a, in a timely manner. And so this is just updating fees to keep up with inflation and to just, um, reduce some that we're not, some of the services that we're not providing. We've just excluded some of those fees. So we'd like to do this annually as part of the budget process, and this is, um, the responses received back from the departments. Any questions?
Nope. Counsel. Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
Yeah, there's a few things here that I don't understand our part on this. We have impact fees that were, for example, Lake Point Improvement District. Aren't those set by the Improvement District rather than by us?
I'd have to defer to Rochelle.
Rochelle would be the best. Don't they have an elected board that takes care of those sorts of things?
Yes, we do not set the impact fees. The board does, but they have an agreement with us to charge the impact fees, and then we give them a check as often as they request. We do it for Stansberry and Lake Point. I would anticipate we won't continue doing it for Lake Point, but that's between you and their council.
Okay.
Good question.
That's all the questions, Chad.
That's it.
The only problem I have with the, the impact fees is they have pennies in there, and I don't like that.
The new ones are going to have that as well.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Move forward? Okay.
There will be a little ashtray in community development where you can stick your spare change.
Off under.
Take a penny, leave a penny, sort of thing.
Thank you. Tips. Okay. That brings us down to H, amending section two-dash-two as well as tables fifteen-dash-five-dash-three. Go ahead and speak to it, Rochelle.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm not going to go through all the numbers.
I was going to ask Councilman Wardle if he had his tickets for Friday, but he walked out, so.
He does.
Good. It was when I saw that I thought of him first. Um, Wholesome Ag has requested an ordinance to allow for medical cannabis. The state requires that we allow medical cannabis production in an agricultural and an industrial zone as a permitted use. So what this ordinance does is it adds the definitions for a medical, for cannabis production establishment, location, a cannabis location, or excuse me, community location, because that is language that is used in the state statute. Medical cannabis pharmacy and a primarily residential zone, that is also language that is used in the state statute. It also allows for the production of cannabis and the medical cannabis pharmacy to be in the multiple use and agricultural zoning districts with the agricultural forty as the permitted zoning. It does not allow for medical cannabis production or a pharmacy within our residential zoning districts. And it does allow for the production and a pharmacy with, the pharmacy within our commercial districts and production within our industrial districts with the manufacturing general as being the permitted use. And the applicant is here. If you have any specific questions for him, the majority of this language was taken out of state statute, and we did check for other municipality slash county ordinances that we pulled stuff from.
And Rochelle may not be aware of this because she was gone for a week or two, but when I received this from community development, I looked at chapter thirty-seven, and I did not change anything of substance, but I did perform some editorial cutting. Uh, there were some paragraphs that I thought were duplicative, that we could write, take two paragraphs and write them in one and save several lines. So everything is, the ideas are the same, the definitions are the same, the distances are the same, all of that is the same. But I did take several paragraphs and combine them, and it's shorter than it used to be.
And Planning Commission did make an, a unanimous favorable recommendation. We had some larger distances from community centers and primary residential zones. Planning Commission requested that we reduce them to what the state minimum is, and that we have done. It's a thousand feet as you walk, as a pedestrian walks, from a community center and six hundred from a primary residential zone.
Okay, any questions?
You know where to look and put it?
Yes, at the end of Hagley Road. The end of Hagley Road.
Any other comments? Okay, moving it forward. Question mark? Forward, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty much, one of those deals where they're not taking away all our planning and selling.
It's, um, we'll talk about contracts. One, Utah Universal Open Settlement. Uh, did you want to speak to that, uh, Scott? Okay.
Hold on, I can't remember this one. Um, they are waiting for our approval, because this one's pending.
Your mic's on, Scott? Just enough that I didn't need, need one. Uh, this, this, this one has, uh, been pending, and most of the counties have already signed it, and they're waiting for us. But other than that, I can't, God, we get so many of these. Which one is this one?
So this, this is one that would have been resolved had we, uh, did that resolution earlier.
Yes.
But this is one that we need to vote on and then sign it at the end of the meeting.
Yes, this is, this is a pharmaceutical, a group of pharmaceutical companies. Trying to see the amount. I can't see the amount in there. But it's the, essentially, the, the, the agreement mirrors the agreement that we signed with the...
But it's the, essentially the, the, the agreement mirrors the agreement that we signed with the distribution on the other, with the other counties and the state. Sorry, I did not have the amount off the top of my head. I forgot about that.
Counsel, any questions on that? So just to reemphasize what Scott had said earlier, that these, many of these will be coming, coming in, trickling in, I think those are the words you used, trickling in. And they come in and they need signatures with authorization and.
Yes, and all, and all the language is the exact same language we approved with the last settlement.
Any questions on this, counsel? No? Move it forward? Okay? Wonderful. That bring us down to six B. And Brittany, is this still, no? Okay, I'm sorry, I was just looking at that. Jeff, did you want to speak to this one? For the Utah Department of Health? No?
I don't need to unless you have questions. These are both the violence injury prevention.
We've got to have you speak into the microphone. Sorry.
Sorry, gentlemen. Both these grants, violence and injury prevention and sexual risk avoidance education for youth, those are both renewal contracts. The violence and injury has to do with things like car seat safety, helmets, firearm safety. And sexual risk avoidance education is working with the schools on abstinence oriented training and, and teaching. But these are both renewals of grants that we've had previously.
So counsel, on the renewal of these grants, right, grants, any questions for Jeff on these? Okay, moving forward to the business meeting. Thank you, Jeff. Bring us to our assistant manager, Brittany Lopez will speak in behalf of Bucky.
Good evening, counsel. I am bringing to you three different contracts tonight on behalf of our emergency service director. The first one is an HVAC agreement with Train. This is a three-year agreement. We have a specific system over there that requires us to sign a contract with Train and only Train. These have been, this has been reviewed by our county attorney and he says it's good to go if you're good to go.
Any questions on this three-year contract? Okay?
All right, the next.
Moving it forward?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'll slow down.
Go ahead.
The next agreement is actually with Mountain Tower, I'm so sorry, Pacific Corp for our South Mountain Tower. And what it is, is they're actually going to pay us money to rent some space on one of the towers that we have. So again, this is a five-year agreement and that's why it's being brought to you guys today.
Is this a new contract or is this old one?
This is a new contract.
It's what?
It's a new contract.
I thought our towers were full.
That was, that was the last word I heard from Bucky. I'm not sure if this is the one that they'd been working on already, and then this was the last one they had space for on this tower site. We have multiple tower sites, but I know he was in contact with the gentleman from, that you mentioned.
Yeah.
And I'll have to verify if, if that's all the towers, or if it's just a specific one he'd asked about. I'll check on that.
Okay. Any other question, counsel? Okay, moving forward. Yeah, thank you. And you'll talk to, about Soldier Canyon?
Correct. So then this next one is, Bucky had put out an RFP for the mitigation work that will be done on Soldier Canyon to clean up after the fire. They did the RFP, and they had two companies that actually responded to that. And this tech co-construction was the one that was rated the highest and approved by the scoring committee.
Okay, any question, counsel? Okay, moving it forward. Question? Yeah, okay. We have discussion items. Adam, would you come up? We're talking about the life insurance and long-term disability renewal.
Yes, thank you. And I have a handout to give you. Decide who gets one. Okay, and this is more just informational, and I can go one minute, or three minutes, or five minutes, or however long you feel, I can adjust. You say one. So, this is a pretty straightforward presentation, more of a FYI to you. We have life insurance that we provide to our employees and long-term disability that we provide to our employees as part of their benefits package. Our current provider provided us with a renewal rate that was higher than our current. And so our brokers, GBS, familiar with them, they suggested we take it out to bid just to see if we could get a better rate with similar coverage or better coverage. And we have secured a provider who is willing to give us a little bit of a reduction of our current rate rather than an increase, which is what we're facing if we don't change. And the coverage in some cases is actually a tiny bit better than, than what we currently have. In most cases, it's the same. They've, they've worked to match what our current coverage is, but there's some things that are slightly better. Couple benefits to doing this, having one carrier for both insurances. Currently, one is P E H P and one is the standard. Standard is life insurance and long-term disability is through P E H P. Having one provider helps with administration, of course, lower cost to Tooele County because the renewal that they provided is less. And like I said, same or better coverage. This Lincoln Financial Services that we're being recommended to go to is actually compatible with the employee navigator system that we use to manage our other benefits, where currently the standard is not. And so Tita's having to do some manual billing and manual things to enter employees in and make sure they're covered. So it'll be a little bit more automated for her. There's some other benefits to doing it. On page two, just one last quick thing, you'll notice Lincoln actually provided us with two different rates. One of them, all the way to the right, is a more substantial increase, but that version actually does have some disruption in the way that it's, the coverage that they're providing on that particular proposal. And so we went with the one that was a two-point-two, two-point-seven-two percent decrease because there's no disruption. And in some cases, that, that actually is a little bit better coverage than what we have currently.
When you say no disruption, you mean no changes to what the previous time?
Right. The, the one all the way to the right has some changes that would impact employees in a negative way, even though it could potentially give some savings minimally. We didn't feel it was worth looking at that as a, as an option, possibly in the future, maybe. But we wanted to at least provide the same level of coverage and, and not be disruptive. And, and with that middle one from Lincoln, it is a little bit of a decrease from what we are currently. So the, the budget money that is already carved out for those benefits, we're, we're planning to move it to Lincoln and want to make sure that you are aware of that effort to do that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any more questions. My minute is far, far past. So appreciate you letting me take some time.
Let, let me just compliment you for seeking out the best benefits for the employees of Tooele County and financially feasible to make sure you cover. So thank you for doing that. Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
Couple more questions, Adam?
Yes.
So I'm looking over here on page five right now.
Okay.
So we are covering both active employees and retired employees at the same rate?
At the same rate as it is current. The, the retirees are covered at a different rate than, than an active employee.
So describe the differences to me.
I, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to describe that.
And all I'm, all I do is I do look at private programs and generally, you know, most people are insured in bigger organizations for like double their income and no additional cost to them. If they want to go beyond that double income, then they're paying a premium to make it triple or quadruple or whatever they want.
And ours is less. We provide forty thousand as kind of a set amount. Maybe that's something to consider increasing, but.
And once they're retired, some do, some don't, have basically like twenty thousand or thirty thousand, which is enough to usually bury somebody.
And, and there's some that are grandfathered in that are on a very old program that is no longer offered to newly retired employees. And, and so there's kind of two different programs for retirees right now. And I think there's twenty-five, maybe twenty-four now, you know, they gradually get less and less that are grandfathered in. The others, they're only covered up until their Medicare age, and then they're not eligible anymore. So.
Can we pay those people off so we don't have a continued increase?
Can I get a point of order, though? I don't know if we're debating that policy tonight.
We're not, we're.
And I'm just, I, I, I see where you're at, but, I mean, we're not, he's not prepared, I'm not prepared to discuss it. I think it's something that, Adam. Maybe at some point, sure. You can get with Commissioner, Councilman Tripp and then get us information based on your questions. I think that would help. Yeah, sure. And, and those are maybe some conversations that could be had, that I'm not prepared for, but I quite appreciate the question, so.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Thank you.
And this is the one that needs to go to the next meeting, just more informational for, for you guys to be aware of what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just, just a comment, Adam, it is on the next meeting.
Yes, it's under action item, it's the first item, it's eight A.
Don't we have to approve the, a new contract?
The new contract with them.
Okay.
Because we're switching.
Switching.
Okay, I didn't realize it was on, but that's great.
Okay.
We're okay.
Move it forward?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Now bring us down to B. And Rochelle, you're up again, and that is a request approval with Economic Opportunity Board recommendation for grants.
Thank you, Chairman and Counsel. Councilman Wardle is back, and congratulations on your PAC entry. The County Economic Opportunity Board has grant funding that we received from the state in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Part of the grant funding that we applied for and received this year was to give grants, they keep changing it, the name of it. Anyways, they're grants for spa business retention and expansion. The state has some other name for it now, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. They are on a reimbursement basis. We had seventy thousand dollars set aside, we had a forty-six thousand dollars request in grants. The Economic Advisory, Economic Opportunity Board has recommended as attached, there's one. Crystal Float Spa received five thousand, Don't Cross Me five thousand, Erda Industrial Concepts five thousand, Happy Tales Grooming three thousand, Jane Lorraine five thousand, Clean and Green Car Wash five thousand, Lofty Ideas five thousand, Skeleton Industries five thousand, The Pair Place five thousand, and this and that professional service three thousand. So the company would have to expend the money, submit receipts, and then we will reimburse, reimburse them up to that dollar amount. We also have a part two grant, we received two hundred thousand dollars with a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar match. The match can be in-kind. This is for professional services to design infrastructure to possible shovel-ready sites. The board has recommended with the three applicants that we split the two hundred thousand dollars evenly between the three and that they, their match would be our in-kind match. So they have to exhibit that they've spent their forty-five thousand dollars before we will give them our, the sixty-seven thousand that we have granted to them. Once we receive this board's approval, we can send them award letters. I anticipate we probably will not do many reimbursements this year being this late in the year. We had a heck of a time getting applications, surprisingly. So I apologize it's this late in the year, but.
And you pushed the money into next year's budget, is that correct?
Yes, we did, yep. Just to make sure we were covered.
Wonderful. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Moving it forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rochelle. Brings us down to C, Erda Interlocal Agreement Extension. Counsel, who would like to lead that discussion?
Colin.
Oh, your name's not down here, I'm sorry, Colin.
No problem. On November first, you authorized one of the options that was before you for the extension of the Erda Interlocal Agreement. Sent that off to their council and then we received an email back, I assume Mr. Brim's met with the Erda City Council and they came back to us with some proposals. You have that email, I sent it to you at the time along with some comments from me, and I believe it's in your materials today. There are four items that they've raised that they'd like to change. Let me start with the fourth one. A new paragraph talking about reconciling the loans we made them earlier this year. That language is already in the initial Interlocal Agreement, which was passed in March. We had two reconciliations we needed to do, one for sales tax revenue that we advanced them, another one for basically municipal service funds revenue. We've already done the reconciliation on the sales tax, we owe them another fifty-four thousand and change, and that check is in the process of being cut. We can't do the property tax slash municipal services tax reconciliation until after the deadline to pay your property taxes, which I believe is tomorrow. So sometime in mid-December or towards Christmas time, we'll be able to do that reconciliation and adjust those numbers. I don't think we need to worry about bullet point number four. It's handled. Bullet point number one talks about roads. There was some discussion that they're receiving now their Class C road funds, which used to be our Class B road funds. And there was some discussion about extra money that Erda could receive, but they weren't yet qualified to receive. I think I've sorted that out in talking with Allison before she left for vacation and talking with Mike Jensen today. It has something to do with every vehicle that is registered, regardless of which county they actually do the registration, if it has a Tooele address. So let's say somebody's in Washington County and they're registered, their car in Washington County, but it's registered to Tooele. The state collects all that money and then they send it to the various counties on some percentage, there's some formula that I don't understand. But they send this money back to the counties. So the counties get the money. And once the municipalities have a tax account number that allows them to receive it, the county then gives that money to the cities. Well, currently, Erda's not getting it because they can't get their tax rate and therefore this number until January, February of next year. So we're getting that money for this year. And as it turns out, once they get their tax rate money, it'll just be automatic and Mike will cut the check and they'll get that money. Truth is, it's probably resolved itself simply as a passage of time. So we'll, I would propose that we strike that extra money sentence from the Interlocal Agreement and just leave it that we take their Class C road fund money. They will get some small amount each month for registrations that are paid elsewhere and perhaps even paid here in the county, but it's not a lot of money, to be honest with you. Number two, law enforcement, I'm going to leave this one till last because you're going to have to decide how much you want to charge them for law enforcement. Let me do number, bullet point number three, which is extraordinary events. I didn't originally have severe snowfall in the agreement. Mr. Brim's requested that we put that in there along with the other extraordinary events that are listed. And then when we sent the agreement to him with the language severe snowfall, then he wanted a definition for what that means. And he volunteered that he would say, well, I'll go to the council, he was going to go to the council and come up with the definition and send it to us. He's not done that. I kicked around something like thirty inches of snow over thirty-six hours, or, or thirty inches of snow over twenty-four hours or something. The bottom line is no definition ever came back to me. If you want to define, define severe snowfall, just tell me what numbers to use, and if you don't want to define it, that's fine. And if you want to take severe snowfall out of there, that's fine. I can see our roads people handling eight hour, eight inches of snow a day with no problem. Three feet of snow in a single day, yeah, that's going to be a, a cost to us. So I don't know how many hundreds of years have to pass before we get six feet in two weeks or something.
Hopefully not any. We need it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having two inches a day every day, but, so there you go, those are the issues. And then on the law enforcement issue, we offered them, oh, I forget the number. Seventy-two thousand nine ninety-six, so basically seventy-three thousand a quarter. That would go up to eighty-five thousand a quarter beginning in January of twenty twenty-three. They've come back to us and you can read their bullet point, they think it ought to be something less, and, and that's just a decision for the council to make. What do you want to charge them? What should the number be? I have no input on that one.
I have a questioner.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
When it comes to definitions of snow, why can't we just say, maintain the current level of services we provided for the last hundreds of years? And we know they're going to do it by priorities when it comes to snowfall. They got critical roads they're going to do. Why don't we just leave it open and say, go do, do the great job we've always done, Road Department, and let it, because we can't define every, nobody's going to go out with a tape measure. Let's just leave it generic and leave it up to our department heads. Because it's work, let's maintain that.
That recommendation is basic. That recommendation basically would be to take the word severe snowfall back out of the agreement and I'm fine with that.
Okay. I, I would like to see that happen.
I don't have a problem with that. Just wanna make sure the county's covered for, you know, there's complaints coming in, why isn't our road being plowed and stuff like that? People understand. It's one of those extraordinary circumstances.
The reason we're not plowing your road timely is cause we're out measuring the snow to see if we have to charge you, so.
Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle.
Colin, I, I just wanna make sure and clarify something because in reading John Brim's paragraph on law enforcement, what he says is that the Interlocal Agreement takes it up to seventy-two thousand. So I'm wondering how did you arrive at eighty-five thousand?
Okay, so if you look at the agreement?
Yeah. Is that with the new included administrative fee?
Yep.
And that's the total amount?
Yeah, it's based on a couple of factors.
Okay.
Uh, number one, there's the administrative fee added in there. And number two, it is anticipated that the uh, money that they will collect next year as property taxes will be significantly increased over this year based on increased house values and increased growth within Erda City. So the, because the number of, of house tops goes up and the value of those house tops goes up, then the amount of money that is collected goes up and this is a percentage of that amount of money. It's a projection.
And that happens because there's growth within the city?
Correct.
Therefore, there's more policing that may need to be done?
The theory is that is correct.
Okay.
So currently we're charging them, I think fifty-six thousand a quarter. We've proposed seventy-two thousand, well seventy-three thousand for this quarter right now and then eighty-five thousand dollars a quarter beginning January first.
That's big.
And so what you're asking is, what's the number we're looking to put on there?
Correct.
Counsel, is there discussion, comments?
You know, I've read-
Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
Excuse me for not raising my hand. Uh, I'm looking at their counterproposal and they're saying uh, request is sixty-five percent. I think our sheriff expressed and our auditor expressed that what's actually been covered down there would be about sixty percent of it. Sixty percent of municipal service. So their counterproposal of sixty-five kinda splits the difference between where we are and, and what our authoritative sources said. I'd be willing to go with sixty-five percent. And we're asking for a fifteen percent administrative fee. For our enterprises funds, we usually ask about ten. And that gives us, you know, enough coverage that we feel comfortable that we're getting good there. I would assume it'd be about the same here. So I'm willing to take their uh, proposed uh, changes. I, I, I favor to accept their counter, bottom line. Especially in regards to law enforcement.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
Yeah.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you. Uh, I like the counter offer from Erda City. I like the sixty-five and I think twelve and a half is a kind of a, a breakpoint between what we were said and what they, they come up to us. I think we could go down and meet them halfway, so. I like the sixty-five and the twelve point five. I think, I think that's a good compromise, so. Meeting him, meeting him halfway, I think that's fair and reasonable. Thank you very much, Erda City, for moving and, and I'm supportive of that.
Counsel, any other comments? Okay, move this one forward.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Moving it forward, thank you. That brings us down to uh, D. Lake Point Fees Boundaries Final Map, uh, twenty-twenty-two election. I have, actually, there's been a question raised on this.
Wait, who, who's doing it?
Yeah, who's talking to this? Okay, J- Jerry, thank you for raising your hand. Matter, I was gonna try to shoot from the hip. This, uh, Jerry Howton, sorry, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Tooele County Recorder Surveyor. So, we've been working with uh, Ryan Zomo, who's one of the sponsors and also one of the uh, council members.
Is he here?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. And you're, we just wanna say congratulations to the new council members and condolences at the same time.
Are, are you prepared to talk to this also?
I, I had not necessarily come to do it, but- What is your name?
Do- That's Doyle Gerard.
Okay.
Go ahead Jerry.
So, we've been working back and forth with um, Ryan and the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And my office has reviewed and approved the um, current local entity plat. However, we, we did that with an understanding that they would need to either come to you or to pay the fee that we have set, which is that we kept it, if you remember, after Erda at twenty thousand. And I think that, that's reasonable for the work that we're doing and everything on it, cause we're still trying to finish Erda. No, that's, yeah, that was- But we're still working on um, and I think that's reasonable, but it's whether or not you guys wanna waive any of that. Now, the recording fee cannot be waived because that's set legislatively.
What, what's that amount?
That amount would be twenty-three oh four, twen- twenty-three hundred and four dollars right now. And that's based on the number of parcels and everything. So, that's set. The other one, the other fee would be the review fee where we do the reviews and everything. And um, that would be twenty thousand dollars. We've completed most of the review. The one problem that uh, that we will need to make sure is when you do your resolution, that goes along with that, because we just had a, an issue with the resolution that the resolution legal description didn't match the this legal description for the um, uh, on the local entity plat. So we would wanna be able to review those before they went to the Lieutenant Governor's Office cause they're getting a lot stricter and they're going to reject it and send it back. And you're on a, sorry, but you're on a timeframe since the canvas, you guys um, approved the canvas of it. So, they have thirty days to get that, the map and the resolution and everything into um, the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And, and I mentioned to Ryan before this that he would need to get on your agenda if they were looking for a waiver cause he brought that up if they, if some of the fees could be waived. So that's why we're here. I have not negotiated anything between, I'm just giving you the facts where we're at.
Yeah, and that's essentially my understanding is that we're here um, requesting some type of waiver if possible.
So we already heard that we can't waiver the recorder fees, that, that's set. And what you're asking for is waiver, waive the other fees or delay them? Anyway, um, is that what you're asking for? Okay, Councilman. Um, Councilman Wardle has a-
So Colin, to do this, uh, as just a matter of housekeeping, I'm trying to get it through my- To do something like this, why don't we need to execute an MOU, an Interlocal Agreement or a resolution to do this?
I prefer a resolution, so we have some type of documentation.
And then a copy of the letter, so that that's it within, that would act as a promissory note, I'm guessing? That we would wait, we would postpone the fees and expect to be paid back at this time. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm happy to put that together. I understand that uh, Lake Point has just retained council or is in the process of retaining council, so I don't know whether you've actually done that yet, but I'm happy to work with council or with designated council members of Lake Point, whatever.
So, we're probably not prepared to vote on anything tonight, just as a discussion, but it sounds like, or it looks like Councilman Tripp has a comment.
I was just gonna-
They, uh, they do, they are on a timeframe. The lesson from Erda was you really wanna be incorporated by the end of the year.
So we, we would have to act on this by next, and have it on the agenda next week, I would think.
Is that doable Colin, with the resolutions?
Certainly.
Jerry? Jerry?
Yeah.
December sixth?
This, this has actually gone fairly smooth. There were some uh, glitches in the beginning, but we worked with uh, the sponsors and the Lieutenant Governor's Office and kind of came to reconciliation where we're at. And they got in the plat in ahead of time like we should have. So we're not pressed for time other than just the review of your resolution to make sure those two match up. Then we can sign, you can sign and then take it in.
And you can give me some guidance as to how long you wanna delay or what you want to do?
I think we need to see the letter. That's, I think, my concern is we haven't seen anything yet. So theoretically, so can you even-
You haven't seen the proposal from Lake Point?
We've, we've, they've sent us two.
I believe we sent that in.
Yeah, it's been here a few days. I saw it a few days ago.
Was it, it wasn't on our agenda tonight. The documents were not up on the agenda. So, I've been waiting.
Okay, I'll find it.
I'll find it and I'll get it to all of you.
And so on the timeframe of December sixth, we're, I'm hearing yes and, and Councilman, you're saying?
We'll work on that, yeah.
What, did we, did we waive any of the fees for Erda?
They were judicially waived. We originally wanted- And we had a district judge who how do I diplomatically say this? Um, in my opinion was ill-informed and made a bad decision. So she said it was worth a thousand to two thousand and we finally negotiated with Erda to do it for three thousand, which was a significant drop in, in what we had originally proposed.
Yeah, and you're still working on it, so there's man hours there, so that was uh-
I, I do wanna say, the uh, Lake Point, as we get, we probably started a little late with them, but they've been really good and this is how the process should work. So as soon as they select their, or elect their um-
Chair.
Council or their chair should be able to move forward and it should be quick cause all the work's been done prior, which is where it should be.
Forgive me, I don't have it in my email. I just checked my email and did a search, Lake Point, Lake Point fees.
I don't have it. I've seen it, but I will find it and get it to all of you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're, we'll, we'll move forward and we'll put it on December sixth so that they can get it. Have that discussion. Thank you. You have a question? Yeah, so we'll put it on our work session for December sixth along with the business. Let's move forward. With that, counsel, uh, Councilman, uh, comes up to adjournment.
We'll move.
Hearing a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We are adjourned at-